Okay, I want to thank each of y'all for coming out tonight. We've got a good attendance here tonight, so we always appreciate everybody being engaged and involved in our county government. If you did not sign in tonight, we ask you before you leave tonight to sign in. We've got a pad there on the table, and there should be some copies of the agenda packet there as well. Okay, under new business number one, we have consideration for an appeal of a zoning variance application for petitioner Rebecca Clark to divide off less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone. Owner John Davis and Barbara Gill of 4863 Chamberlain Road, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax partial 0-448-020. This has already been before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission voted to deny this variance, and so the applicant has asked for an appeals process, and that calls for that to come before this body. So is there anyone that would like to speak about this appeal?
One way.
Yes, just go ahead.
What we're trying to do is get one acre land that's got a double-wide trailer.
Single-wide.
Single-wide, I'm sorry, separated off of the fifteen, almost sixteen acres of land. We're trying to sell the home with the fifteen acres of land, and we can't do that with the single-wide trailer sitting on it. The situation is, my son's got the land in the wheel where my mother and dad passed away. It's farmland, we use it to run cattle on. If I put this five acres of land with this trailer, we lose our farmland, we lose the pasture land. And we're trying to fight to keep them having to do this. If we could just have the one acre, we'd be willing to do two at the most, if that's what it takes. But just to give up the five acres of land with that single-wide trailer on it, then it's, you know, it's putting a hurt on our family for the situation, because we farm it, and it's the pasture land for the cattle. And I've got a letter from my mom before she passed away, where at the death of my sister, that single-wide trailer with that acre land was supposed to go back to the state anyway. And I don't know if it would have any actions on changing anybody's mind or whatever, but, you know, we do have that, where it's supposed to go back to the state. So that's just mainly what we're trying to do, is to try to get this changed to where we can get the one acre surveyed off with the single-wide trailer on it, because, you know, we don't want to lose our pasture land.
The pasture land's got a pond, so when we take, the way the trailer sits is when the five acres are going to go over into the pasture. We've got eight heads of cattle in there, then we'll have to find another access way to enter the pasture, plus you get half the pond, we'll go with that. And we're trying to keep that pasture in one place, because he's wanting to buy the house and all the land except that one acre land.
And too. The situation is with family, if they even run that five acres through the middle of that pasture land, like you said, we're not going to have access to it. All right, she's going to come up and say, "All right, you get off my land, or you don't have the right to be over here." And like you said, we're not going to have this access to this other side. And I don't want to split this land up. That's all we're trying to do, is to get the one acre with the trailer that's been sitting there since the land was filed, just separate it off. And like I said, I do have a letter, you know, signed from my mom with their signatures too, that at her death, that it would go back to the state anyway. And, you know, five acres don't seem like a lot to a lot of people, but it does to us, because those only fifteen acres and the side that's being taken is pasture land, you know, and then we're going to lose our way to be able to run our cattle and everything else on it.
See, if you don't mind me adding something in on this, we're not trying to knock my aunt or anybody out of the saddle, as far as the will goes. You know, in the will, it states that they wanted to leave the acre land with the trailer to them. The rest of the land was supposed to go to the boys, and actually, my aunt ended up with my mom and my sister as well. They ended up with the house in the will. So once we buy the house, she's going to get that acre land plus $30,000 for whatever it splits up to be, whatever the math.
See, the actually, the house was supposed to, how it was laid out, go with this one acre. But well, I've decided just to leave it as a whole, because my boys wants to leave it together, and just separate the one acre with the trailer sitting on it.
And the thing that worries me, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to throw my aunt under the bus at all, but she was born with juvenile diabetes, she was diabetic, and she grew up rough, like she was on drugs, and her husband's already been, he's already in trouble, he's going to prison for six months, whatever. He's got a lien on him right now. They are not, in my book, they are not responsible enough to end up with five acres, period. And that's, that's the way I see it. The acre, if something happens, yeah, I could probably get the acre back if I had to buy it back. Five acres with another land payment, I'm not going to be able to swing that. And I can't, I don't want to trust them with the five acres. I don't know.
They can't pay their taxes on it, they watch rather now.
We get, we get.
I know they can't pay taxes on five acres of land, but there's just no way.
We live right next door, you know, we got this mailbox and this mailbox. We get every month a late notice on their power that's about to be turned off. And they're not going to have the money to pay for this five acres of land, period. It's not, it's not going to happen.
Well, lose their land, and we don't want, you know, and it's, it's what mother and dad left to us.
About in the will.
In the will, and they're farming, we're farming with our cattle, and wait, it's at it right now, we're going to lose, we're going to lose our pasture land. And the five acres of land, sure as I'm sitting here, I know they're gone, I mean, that's just, it's a hardship. I mean, she don't work, she's not able to.
She's unable to work.
And they can't, you know, make ends meet as it is, and you give them this five acres of land, and it's, it's gone.
He works at broker right now, and I'm pretty sure when he gets sent off, he's going to lose his job at brokers, they're not going to have any income.
Okay, since this did go before the planning and zoning, is this typically, any variances can be approved or denied by planning and zoning? So I think it's appropriate for our planning and zoning directors, anything else you'd like to add or say, or anything from the meeting of the zoning board?
As best I can remember, it was, this was never mentioned about your son buying the house and the farm.
Yes, sir, it was, but you.
And your sister there, she never did say that they could not afford to pay the taxes.
She wouldn't, she wouldn't admit to it.
Well, I understand, but at the same time, with this being is, the reason they denied it, there's 15.2 acres, and she stated that they were welcome to use that land, that they wouldn't put up any fences.
That's not the deal, dude. That's not the deal. The deal is, they will not be able to afford to pay for this five acres. The game plan, the game plan, when this was all said and done by the will, by the will now, Regina was supposed to end up with that one acre and the trailer. The boys was supposed to end up with the land, the sisters and my, my sister was going to end up with a house. We're buying the house, that's been the game plan. Now, I don't know what, what means.
Yeah, it was me, and I will say too, she come, she come to me after all this was said and done, and I told her, I said, "Jenna, I said, you should have spoke up whenever you had your chance," but they didn't want, she was just like, "Well, we don't want the five acres of land, we just want the one acre." But see, there was bound in a term and just a proponent. I know my family, and I know how bad it is for them too. And I'm telling you, I mean, I'm not trying to downplay nobody, I love her too, she's my sister, but they, the situation that they're in, he's about to be sent to prison for six months.
He's got a lien.
He's got a lien on him, and she don't work, she stays in bed. And I know, I know my family, I live, I live in it, and I know what situation that we're facing. We're not trying to take nothing from nobody, but we're trying to save what pasture, and that is the pasture land that's on that side with the trailer sitting.
There was a reason why that will was made out the way it was, and if you ain't read the will.
If you remember, a will is the wish of somebody.
Yeah.
That does not override the ordinances of a county. A will is only a wish, that's what your mother wanted.
That was what her mother and her father wanted.
I don't see, I mean, I'm not going to argue on the one, I don't see why this is such a big deal, why we're trying to save the land, and we know the situation that's going to happen, we fixing to sign over five acres, but then when the year's time, somebody else is going to have that five acres, then when they have that five acres, then we won't have access to other side of the lake, to other side of the pasture.
Yeah, that's me, I don't.
He had a wreck down in front of Walmart, and he didn't have insurance, and the person he hit has got a $30,000 lien on him right now. This is what we're trying to do, we ain't trying to.
Knock nobody out of the saddle.
I just trying, we're just trying to save.
That land.
So we can have a way to get the cows.
Is separating the pasture right here is where the main house is sitting, and the trailer is over here on this side. Every bit of the pasture land that's already fenced off runs behind that single-wide trailer, along with the stock pond that we water the cows with. And if I do the five acres, more than likely, you're going to have land that's on the side where the church is at, to where you're not going to have, we're not going to have access to it whatsoever. Okay, as soon as we deal this five acres of land over to her, she's going to turn around and say, "You get your cows off my farm."
I'm not even, I'm not even worried about that, I'm more worried about her losing the place.
Yeah, and then we're going to, you know, we won't have no land to put our cows on.
She is not capable of working, period.
Okay, appreciate, excuse me, appreciate y'all coming and speaking, and being able to sit here and listen and concentrate on what y'all were saying, but I think we're getting to the point where we're kind of going over this multiple times. So in respect of everyone's time, I think we're going to need to move forward. Is there anyone else here that's here to speak on this issue? Excuse me, Paul is killing me. I'm very sensitive to your family situation, and I offer my condolences for the loss of your, of your family members and your mother, but unfortunately, we're in a situation where our zoning and ordinance regulations stand on their own, and for someone to be able to come and make something in a will, you know, if it doesn't match up to the way the zoning ordinances are, then I can't take that will and say that will trumps the zoning ordinances. And I know that was your mother's wish, and I know it's her best intentions, and I understand probably, as you indicated, your mother's concerns of why she felt like that needed to be done that way, and I, and I respect that. But under these circumstances, as far as the greater good of our community and our county, and to be consistent and fair with all property owners, we have to uphold our ordinance standards that we have in place. These ordinance standards were not anything that myself or my administration has created. Excuse me, these are standards that have been put in place for quite some time. So basically, my responsibility is, is to come in and uphold and see that those ordinances are managed and enforced properly. So regretfully, I'm going to have to tell you, I'm going to have to deny this request based off of that. So I wish I had better news, wish I had other options, but hopefully, there's something y'all can work out with the trailer, or maybe moving it, or some way you can handle the property. And you may have to seek some legal counsel and get some help with that, or maybe through the probate court, but as far as changing the regulations or making an exception, it's not in the best interest of the county at this time to do that.
Well, how do you move a trailer that's thirty years old? Or forty?
Yeah, that I wouldn't be able to tell you, I've never had to deal with that.
Well, I mean, does that, like, if you farm land, and they don't make exceptions for farming land?
They just didn't.
I mean, we, I mean, that's our, I was.
But you know, you've got over fifteen acres there, you know, to work with, and you've got two residences, and so you're just going to need to explore some of your other options and.
What did you advise then? What can be done? Because there, there won't be, if this place sold, I was going to buy it.
I think you may need to consult with a lawyer, maybe to help figure out how to maybe to structure that to protect the family land as a whole, but that's really outside my realm of being able to advise you, you know, how to handle that else otherwise. Okay, we're going to need to move forward. Okay, we have a resolution here. Resolution R-008-18, the resolution of the sole commissioner of Walker County to designate a location for Walker County Courthouse Annex III. Whereas, an emergency response to the collapse of an adjoining building on February the 22nd, 2018, caused a temporary closure of the Walker County Courthouse Annex Building II. And the lack of structural integrity of the adjoining building and resulting concerns for the safety of the Walker County employees and member of the public has caused the Walker County Courthouse Annex Building II to remain temporarily closed. And whereas, as a result of the Walker County Courthouse Annex Building II's temporary closure, and to fulfill the county's duties and responsibilities under state law to provide space for county and state offices as to prepare for the upcoming criminal trial term of the Court of the Walker County Superior Court, the governing authority is making ready for use a courthouse annex building owned by Walker County located at 201 South Main, Lafette, Georgia. And whereas, Walker County owned the building located at 201 South Main since October 15, 1990, and said building was in limited use following the relocation of the Tax Commissioner's Office, Tax Assessor Office, and other county services. Therefore, be it resolved by the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that the building at 201 South Main, Lafette, Georgia is hereby designated as Walker County Courthouse Annex III. So resolved and adopted the nineteenth day of April, 2018. Just to give you a little more feedback about this information, as you came in tonight, I'm sure y'all saw the demolition that's going on here at the corner of Main Street and, that's Main Street and Duke Street, excuse me, Highway 136. So we have had a structural engineer has come and looked at that building and has given us a written report, and has put his seal on that report stating that our annex building is not safe structurally to occupy at this time. And so we have had that building closed temporarily since the evening of February the 22nd, when the adjoining building had the catastrophic failure. What's creating some of these challenges is that the courthouse annex to building and the building that failed, we actually have a shared wall, and so both buildings are being supported by that one wall, and that wall, due to the collapse of the portion of that building, has put some structural hardship and stress on that shared wall that we have there. So we jumped into action very quickly after that collapse, because the structural engineers were telling us that next morning, on Friday, that this could be six months to a year before this construction demolition phase is over with, and we'd have access to that building, was the projection at that time. Since that time, with the recent structural engineer, he has validated that, you know, again, the concern of that building not being, be able to utilize. So we had probably ninety-five percent of the old tag and tax office, or some people that's been around a long time in the community, referred to as the old kitchens clinic building, about ninety-five percent of that building was just sitting vacant. The building structurally is a very, very sound structural building that the county has, and also being located here very close to the existing court system in Walker County. We elected to take and make some modifications to that to provide office space and to create this Annex III building. Under the times that we are under, we will have jury trials starting there on Monday. So we have been working nonstop, there are crews there still working this evening, and we will be working all through the weekend to get that facility up and running, ready to go, eight o'clock Monday morning. So it's going to, basically, we're taking lemons and making lemonade. We took a problem, we regrouped, had an opportunity to take and make some upgrades to the building, and we're well on our way with that and have that going tomorrow, or on Monday, excuse me. Is there any questions about this? Any additional comments or questions on this? But hearing, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and sign this resolution. We have to have this in play to make that an official location, to give our court systems authorization to direct people to there as an annex courtroom. That'll be attested by clerk. Okay, item number three, public consideration of a purchase order request from the Public's Works Department. As y'all know, back in October last year, we passed a ordinance to make it mandatory that any expenditures or capital purchases that exceed $15,000 out of the normal course of the day-to-day business and operation of our county would actually become before the public meetings, so the public and our citizens would understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, and how we're spending and or investing tax dollars. So we have a request here today from our public works director in the amount of $101,078 for the purchase of some mowing equipment for our right-of-ways, our county right-of-ways. So Carlin Bowers, our superintendent of our public works, is here this evening, and he's going to give us a little bit of background of what he has dealt with over the last couple of years with maintaining the right-of-ways, the type of equipment that they've had to work with, some of the challenges, hurdles, things that he has dealt with, and how we had come to this decision, and the reason for his request. Carl?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Basically, the four tractor, we're going to be able to trade off four of these things that they are, right now, tore up. We're looking at roughly seven to eight thousand dollars to get them repaired, and I personally don't think that they're worth that. We are getting a decent trade-in value on them. They're older knuckleboom mowers, they're pushing from ten thousand to seven thousand hours, and anybody that has any equipment knows around four to five thousand hours, you need to be thinking about replacing your equipment, I mean, because then you're just dumping money into parks. We currently have one ten-foot Batwing bush hog, and it's, it's older tractor, but it will keep up a little bit. I just need the tractors and the batwings to go with the knucklebooms that we have that will run, kind of speed this mowing process up, we get a little bit wider cut on the shoulders, rather than just, you know, making ten-foot cuts with the knucklebooms. It cuts down on the backing and backing up going forward, it just, it's a faster process.
Well, Carl, for better, better explanation, a knuckleboom, that's the mowing depth that goes out on the arm of a tractor. How wide is that mowing depth?
That's, that's five foot. Now, if you try to mow ten foot with it, you're going to make about six passes, because you have to overlap so much. So your first cut will be five foot, your second cut may be three, and that depends on the grass and what all your cut and everything.
So an actual Batwing attachment goes on the back.
Yes.
Expands out on both sides.
On one side.
Or one side, how wide does that make?
That's ten. They cut ten foot, and that's one pass. Now, we can't get ten foot everywhere, but on these wider shoulder roads, it's a ten-foot cut with the knuckleboom behind it, so that makes it fifteen. So, I mean, it's, it's just a straightforward shot.
So you indicated that you only had one Batwing mower now.
Right, correct.
So has, has it always been that way?
We used to run four Batwing mowers with, we've got four mowing crews. We would keep a Batwing mower and a knuckleboom mower. Our batwings were sold off, and they put knucklebooms on those tractors that pulled those batwings. Those particular tractors are okay, and knucklebooms are, you know, they'll keep up. They've got maybe one or two more years left, but not long. But we have not, we hadn't been pulling a Batwing in two years now.
So it's my understanding that, I guess going on three years now, actually.
Three, yes.
The county, the previous administration sold off the Batwing equipment.
And purchased the knuckleboom mowers and just put them on our tractors that we pulled the batwings with.
So they sold off equipment you really needed.
Correct, yeah.
To get the wider pass.
Right.
And so when we had a lot of rain last summer.
That really hurt. It really hurt. It's going to be a definite help. We'll put, we'll put these two new ones more on the, on the southern, southern ends of the county, just because the shoulders are much wider down that way. I want to get my guys that mow the north end of the county, I'll put them in a better knuckleboom tractor where they can kind of speed that process up. That's pretty much about all available now can be mowed with a Batwing. We used to mow it in close to three weeks with one knuckleboom and a Batwing. Last week it took nearly, I mean, I'm sorry, last year, it took, well, it took forever to get there, first of all, and then when we got there, it took nearly six to seven weeks to get it cut, just because we had, had the backup, and we just had to make so many trips.
Yeah, we had a lot of rain, the grass got real high, and you really didn't have the proper equipment really to do the job that you needed. Because when we got into that rainy season last year, I started asking that question, how are we so far behind on mowing? Why has this just now happened? And Carl was explaining to me, well, they had sold off part of the equipment that they needed. And said, "We don't have the ability to mow like we used to be able to mow." And so last year, we actually even borrowed a Batwing from the city of Rossville.
We did.
They were very gracious to, to work with us and let us use their Batwing over a weekend to try to help us get called up, because we had many areas that the grass got six-foot high.
Right.
And it was becoming a very critical safety issue. We were getting a lot of calls, and people expressing high concerns of safety, not being able to see out of their driveways, intersections, and they were very, very valid concerns. And so we knew this year that we were going to have to do something about that. And what we've had before with these tractors is they've had two backup tractors. So we mentioned that they run four crews, run two mowers per crew, so when they're out mowing, they've got eight tractors out mowing with two backups. Well, we've got four tractors that mechanically are down, and so we're going to replace four with two, so therefore, we're not going to have a backup. So we're going to be operating on the edge, but we just don't feel like, at this time, we can justify to the citizens of going and buying more than two tractors with the two Batwings, and so we're going to try to work that into our budgeting next year. So we are making a capital expenditure here to invest, to give our public works folks the equipment that they desperately need in order to get the job done, to make our roads as safe as possible, to replace four tractors that are way, way past their time, that should have been perched from the fleet probably three or four years ago due to the amount of hours and wear on those. Because these tractors take a beating, you know, the, the road right-of-ways are rough, they get on those tractors and they run them forty hours a week, a lot of vibration, and so you've got a lot of extra wear on those, that type of equipment versus it being on a farm where you can more manage the conditions over time. So this is something that is very much needed. We vetted this out, made sure we were getting the, the government pricing on this, and making sure that we are. sure that we are making the right decision for our county. Is there any questions on this?
I hope we're gonna start early and get out on this. If you're gonna, he said seventy, eight thousand dollars to repair these tractors?
Yes.
That's thirty-two thousand dollars versus a hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna say we save it seventy-eight thousand.
Well, the, the problem is, is two of them have got, they need transmission overhauls completely. And then when you do that, then you've still got a wore-out tractor, and you still don't have the batwing attachments to go and do the mowing properly. So it is, these tractors have well seen past their life expectancy. I mean, they are on borrowed time. They have sucked the life out of these tractors, because these are the four oldest tractors in the fleet.
They are, these, uh, these four are ninety-nine and two thousand and one models. So they're seventeen years old, eighteen, eighteen years old.
So that's a lot of abuse and a lot of years and a lot of hours on tractors. And if we don't do something, if we even go back and just try to patch these up, try to get another season out of them, we're gonna have safety issues again in our county with people not being able to see. Fortunately, we've been in a position this year, we've not had the extreme, extreme warm weather and rain all at the same time. So I noticed just this week, the state has just now started mowing their right-of-ways, grass is up about a foot, so we're not critical at this point. But we get the right equipment in, like he said, instead of taking six or seven weeks to run a route, you'll be able to run that in probably three, maybe four weeks top, so they can get around more times to manage that more efficiently the way it's set up and designed to do.
Well, I got a question.
Okay.
Do y'all go out and get bids on these things, you know, like going to other states and states and see which somebody could give us a better price on these mowers and things instead of buying from one place? I'm just saying, you know, I'm not running everyone, but if we could get probably ten bids on it and see which one'd be cheapest, and then go back, you know, to the pick the cheapest and talk to them, maybe cut a little bit if we buy so many from them that we can afford?
Yeah.
But, okay, go ahead.
Carlin spent a lot of time on this, and I actually sent him to Perry, Georgia, to one of the shows to look and evaluate the type of equipment that we needed. So he's probably got forty or fifty hours of man-time researching and working this and working on the price point and evaluating what we need to make sure that we get this right.
I've got one more question.
Okay.
All right, if you split the county up, you know, mowers-wise, if you've got so many sections, say, you've got four sections, you really need four mowers in each section, that'd be sixteen mowers. It, 'cause this county is big enough.
Oh, that'd be great.
That's what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying?
I would love to do that.
Because, like where I live, man, if you have a flat and narrow show, them rattlesnakes is this big.
Yeah.
And do you wanna fix a tire out there and then weeds? And how often should we, you know, like every other month or something come through there? 'Cause one, uh, the last administration waited, cut spring, then wait till the end of summer, cut again, it'd be higher than me. And then when somebody pulls up in there and needs a tire fixed, I would like to get them in there with me to take a tire off and hope in rattlesnakes don't come around and bite, you know what I'm saying? That's what you have to look at. I'm talking about danger, I'm not trying to be a smart addict, I'm just trying to look at the safety part about it, but I know you have to work with the money. That's, that's all I got, so.
That's right. I mean, we would be great to have three or four tractors per crew, because you're right, we've got hundreds of miles of right-of-way that we're, we're mowing. And what a lot of people don't stop to think about, you go down a mile of road, you gotta come back a mile the other way.
That's right.
So the miles of road that we have is times two. And so it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of time to do that, and so we're gonna be operating still on the edge for another year to be able to even do this. Uh, so this is a, a first step. What's, what year model is the newest tractor that the department has?
Uh, the newest, I believe, is an oh-seven.
Yeah, so.
Four.
It's been a long time since this department has seen any new equipment to maintain our right-of-ways.
Yes, oh-seven.
Oh-seven is the newest one we've got.
Wouldn't go handle a bat wing, right?
That's right.
Hmm, that's right.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be tough. It's just gonna make it difficult on these guys, but this is the recommendation from that department. This is what they feel that they wanna do, so.
Are we gonna go buy four?
Two.
Just two? Just two big counties, just two?
Well, these two with the other extras that we have, or not extras, but the remainder tractors that we have.
Well, and one thing that happened too, we're, we're mowing a five-foot cut with these batwings, and we'll be able to mow a ten-foot cut. So that's gonna help us make up that extra difference of time, and hopefully, having some new equipment in the fleet, we won't have the downtime with the new tractors, hopefully. Sometimes new has problems too, I do realize, but we, we felt that this was the, the best route for the county at the time and to manage our finances the most efficient way possible. Any other question or comment on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and approve this request. And Carlin, I know the men on your team are gonna be thrilled.
Two of them are, for sure.
Yeah, two of them are, for sure. There may be a couple others jealous, but I know it's been a, a long time since you guys have seen any new equipment?
Certainly appreciate it.
In that department, so appreciate what you do in maintaining the safety of our roads. Okay, we have a proclamation for pet health awareness week in Walker County. Now we get into the fun stuff. All right, we've got a proclamation here, says by so commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation for pet health awareness week. Whereas dog and cats have provided companionship to people for centuries, they share the homes of thousands of Walker County residents, providing love and loyalty to the owners and the benefits for social connections, exercise and other, and an improvement sense of well-being. And whereas responsible pet ownership is vital to the well-being of pets and people, the citizens of Walker County have the responsibility to spay and neuter and properly vaccinate their pets, as this is a healthy choice for the companion, companions, animals, and whereas pets must be protected from harm and have the care and the nutrition they need. Animal workers and advocates of our community work tirelessly to keep pets, pets healthy and safe, and whereas Walker County Animal Shelter and Adoption Center helps both animals and people by returning lost pets to their owners, matching homeless animals with the loving new families, and educating the public on pet welfare issues among other functions. And whereas the citizens of Walker County are urged to participate in rabid clinics being held across the county on April the twenty-eighth and May the fifth, and National Adopt a Shelter Pet Day on April thirtieth. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, so commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April the thirtieth through the May fifth as Pet Health Awareness Week in Walker County, Georgia. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Walker County to fix this nineteenth day of April two thousand and eighteen. Signed by Shannon K. Whitfield, so commissioner. You know, we had a public hearing, a public hearing back at the end of January, and had over eighty people show up for that meeting. It was a fabulous turnout. We are going to have our second public hearing on our animal care ordinance on May the first. We'll be releasing some documentation on that next week. But we felt it was very important to bring awareness to the welfare and care of our animals in our community. I don't think this is a topic that we can spend enough time on, this is very, very important. But we have a lot of animals in our community. By show of hands, how many of you in this room are pet owners? Raise your hand, please. The lion's share of everyone in this room is a pet owner. So overwhelming majority, and if you've got sixty-eight thousand plus citizens in our county, I bet you've got at least half of those have pets. And so it's a big, important part of our community, our residents, and so we wanted to make people aware that on April the twenty-eighth and May the fifth, that there are rabid clinics that are set up. You can get that information and locations off of our website, and they can go out and have that done for the low rate of fifteen dollars. Uh, that's hard to beat, to be able to get that done and protect your animals from rabies and also to protect someone if they are accidentally bit or nipped by a dog or cat. So this is very important, wanted to bring attention to this. Uh, our pets are a vital part of our community, and so we proudly put this proclamation in order. Any additional comments on this?
This is a coyote, he's got a dog chasing around, you hear a gobbin' at night. They, they.
There's a lot of them around, yeah. Okay, moving on to item number five, Walker County Department Statistics for March two thousand and eighteen. Uh, this is in the pack and it'll also be online. Uh, we have Stephanie here with us today, who, I'm gonna put her on the spot. She's our manager at the animal shelters, doing an outstanding job. The month of March, she was able to get a hundred and thirteen dogs placed. Uh, we didn't have any cats to place, I don't think, and we, we only had to euthanize eight dogs that were either sick or aggressive, regretfully, that has to be done sometimes. But fantastic that we'd get, this quarter, first quarter, we've had two hundred and eighty dogs that have found homes or returned to their owners and twenty-five cats. So that's, uh, great news. And our code enforcement, as they go through and do an inspection street by street, we found six hundred and seventy-four of our residents that were in compliance with our code and ordinances, so that's great news. We love to find those that are in compliance. Uh, there were ninety-five citations that were written in the month of March. Happy to report to you again that in March, we had forty-two cases that were closed. So that's forty-two that previously were out of compliance, that received at least a warning citation, and then they worked hard and got in compliance. And so year-to-date, first quarter, we've had a hundred and twenty properties get in compliance with their ordinances with their properties. So that's great news. Uh, we had four hundred and eighty last year get in compliance, so we're well on our way to beat that number. We'll be at, at a thousand before you know it, and that'd be a great accomplishment for that department. Our fire and rescue department continues to answer hundreds of calls a month. In the month of March, they answered four hundred and fifty-seven calls. That's sixteen hundred and seven calls for the first quarter. Uh, they were able to respond in three hundred and thirty-eight of those in our quick-response vehicles, which they can get there faster and safer and better utilization of our assets. Our litter roadside pickup, there was thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-two pounds of trash that was picked up. That gave us a total of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two pounds of trash picked up off our road sides for the quarter. Uh, it's fantastic to report a continued good work of our staff at a Mountain Cove Farms Resort. Uh, we had forty-six rooms that were booked out in the month of March. That was, put us at seventy-three for the quarter. So we're well on our way to topping our numbers from last year, where we had five hundred and twenty-five nights booked out in two thousand and seventeen. Also, very exciting that new home construction, this is single-family home construction, had a great month in March with twenty-two new permits issued. So that's fantastic to see, starting out in the spring, to have twenty-two new homeowners coming to Walker County. People are seeing, uh, the value and the beauty of our community and wanna be a part of Walker County, so that's exciting. Also, on our public relations, we were able to track and document fifty-one media impressions or stories out into the marketplace. We added two hundred and sixty-four new Facebook followers, so that was a, a great month. Uh, we've added seven hundred and ninety-five new followers in the first quarter, so that, it's increasing quite rapidly, so if you're not a follower on Facebook, please go on and follow us on Facebook to be able to get the latest information that's put out on a weekly basis. Joe did a fabulous job of getting forty-four Facebook posts of important items and events and things going on in our community, so there's forty-four posts in the month. Uh, our website visits were up tremendously, with thirty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-three unique visits to our website. So there's a lot of interest, and people looking at Walker County, people getting documents and information, and using that as a real valuable resource, so we're tickled with that. Our newsletter subscribers, we put out a monthly newsletter that's free of charge. It's an online subscription that you can just add your email address and start getting that. It usually comes out around the first day of the month, so we added a hundred and fifty-two new subscribers to that. So if you wanna go to our website, you can find the link and enter in your information. We don't sell that information or share it or do anything, it's just strictly for you to be able to have access to that newsletter. And it's a recap each month of what's happened the prior month and gives you about a five or six-minute read summary of everything positive going on in Walker County. Public Works, uh, Carlin and his crew in Public Works are out working hard, patching holes. And so they were able to patch six hundred and nine potholes. So we're tracking everything. So that's twelve hundred and thirty-nine potholes in the first quarter, and this information has not been tracked in the past, so we don't have any prior-year data. Our transit service continues to be a very vital service that a lot of our citizens rely on, and as we got into the spring part of the year, we're seeing more of our citizens provided, that need that service. So there was one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four transit trips with our transit service. So that's five thousand three hundred and forty-three trips in the first quarter. So we are well on our way to most likely passing our numbers for two thousand and seventeen. So some great information here, a lot of good data that we track, and we can see the work that our staff is doing to provide the services for our citizens. At this time, we'll call our special call meeting, we'll adjourn that meeting, and we will open up the floor to any open discussion or general comments related to county government. Quite much tonight. All right, we appreciate you coming out. You'll see there at the bottom is the reminder of the public input session and our animal care ordinance that will be May the first at six P.M. Please note that that will be at the Walker County Civic Center. Uh, we had a standing room only at the LaFett Library back in January, so we hope to have another good crowd. Uh, we had a packed house, didn't even have enough chairs, which was a great problem to have, but, so we're gonna move that to the center of the county and give us a bigger venue and make sure we got plenty of seating for everybody, so I think we can accommodate about four hundred and fifty people, so come on out, we'll have a place for you. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be Thursday, May the tenth at six P.M., and we will have that as one of our first two public hearings as well on our animal health ordinance. And so we will, to follow protocol and to follow regulations, we will hear that on the tenth, and then at our second meeting, we'll hear that, make any changes or modifications, take any suggestions. And hopefully, by the end of May, did I say March? I might have said March. But anyway, by May, by the end of May, we hope to have our animal ordinance finished, finalized, done, and in the books. So we started on that in January, and we've been working hard through that and hope to get that completed by the end of May. Appreciate all of y'all coming out tonight, have safe travels, look forward to seeing you back on May the first at Civic Center. Good evening.